Okay, at this time, again, good evening. Welcome to the second of the town council meeting. Uh, meeting for May 18th. At this time, I would invite, uh, Don Griffin to come forward.
Lord, we acknowledge you as the Creator and sustainer of this world that we live in, and including this town of Sunnyvale. So we invoke your wisdom and your guidance to this town council, to the members of the city staff. We just look to you to give us the wisdom we need to deal with the issues that we're asked to deal with on behalf of these people. In our precious name, we pray. Amen.
Okay, at this time, again, good evening. Uh, welcome to the second of the town council meeting. Uh, meeting for May 18th. At this time, I would invite, uh, Don Griffin to come forward.
Let's pray. Lord, we acknowledge you as the Creator and sustainer of this world that we live in, and including this town of Sunnyvale. So we invoke your wisdom and your guidance to this town council, to the members of the city staff. We just look to you to give us the wisdom we need to deal with the issues that we're asked to deal with on behalf of these people. In our precious name, we pray. Amen.
Okay, at this time, again, good evening. Uh, welcome to the second of the town council meeting. Uh, meeting for May 18th. At this time, I would invite, uh, Don Griffin to come forward.
Let's pray. Lord, we acknowledge you as the Creator and sustainer of this world that we live in, and including this town of Sunnyvale. So we invoke your wisdom and your guidance to this town council, to the members of the city staff. We just look to you to give us the wisdom we need to deal with the issues that we're asked to deal with on behalf of these people. In our precious name, we pray. Amen.
Okay, at this time, again, good evening. Uh, welcome to the second of the town council meeting. Uh, meeting for May 18th. At this time, I would invite, uh, Don Griffin to come forward.
Let's pray. Lord, we acknowledge you as the Creator and sustainer of this world that we live in, and including this town of Sunnyvale. So we invoke your wisdom and your guidance to this town council, to the members of the city staff. We just look to you to give us the wisdom we need to deal with the issues that we're asked to deal with on behalf of these people. In our precious name, we pray. Amen.
Okay, at this time, again, good evening. Uh, welcome to the second of the town council meeting. Uh, meeting for May 18th. At this time, I would invite, uh, Don Griffin to come forward.
Okay, at this time, let me call to order the regular town council meeting of the town of Sunnyvale, uh, for May 28th. For the record, all council members are present, and so we have a call. The first item on the agenda is the public forum. So at this time, if you would like to come and speak to the council, uh, please come forward. Now one is coming forward, so I am going to close the public forum. Uh, council and members of the audience, uh, we have a, the next item is recognition. So, in my last several years, uh, I, I know some of the citizens took the effort to stand for an election or volunteered for a different vote on commission. But we have so much talent in this town, so much knowledge, so many qualified people who want to do different things, and help the town, but at the same time, do not want to be spending time in council meetings or other stuff. That's, that's the different calling. So when, uh, this year, when, I should say, last year, 2019, 2018 council, we started looking into different, uh, projects or programs, we thought it's important that we get, uh, tap into this very vast resource of citizens who are qualified and wanting and, and, and to help with the town in many ways. So tonight, tonight, we will be recognizing the Home Rule Charter Committee members, and also the Ethics Committee members. So, at this time, I would like to take a moment to recognize members of the Home Rule Char, Home Rule Charter Committee and the Ethics Committee. These individuals voluntarily chose to undertake a service or duty, and for that, they have made a difference in the town of Sunnyvale. They have spent countless hours volunteering their personal time away from their families, and for that, the council and I are very grateful. So on behalf of myself and the council and the staff, we greatly appreciate your service. So at this time, I'm going to, um, come to the front. We have, uh, individual, uh, certificates of recognition for everybody. So I will call the, the president or the leader of each of the teams to come forward. Uh, then after that, each of the team members can come and receive this one.
But Mr. Anderson, did you want to come forward? Want to say something?
Well, I will at your hazard. Uh, I, as, as chairman of your Ethics Committee, I, I think I speak for all the members of the committee, when I wanted to say thank you to this council. Uh, it was an honor and a privilege, and we appreciate your confidence in us to do this task. And I think for most of us, it was a labor of love, and, uh, we had very good participation from everybody. And, and if I could, I would like to, uh, have the members of the committee who are here to go ahead and stand. Mark?
Okay, I'll, okay, I'll come forward.
Oh, well, please, come forward. Yeah, that's even better.
So let me give this to Charles. Charles, thank you very much.
I'll stand next to you. Two troublemakers.
Can anyone come forward?
One.
First, Mr. Egan. Mr. Emily Powell. Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Thank you.
Mark?
Hello.
You came first, right?
Thank you.
Then I'm going to leave this with Rachel here. There's one for, uh, Ernest Borton also.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Can I, Dr. David, go? Mark, say here, Mark. You understand me?
What's that? You understand me?
I'll say a couple of them. I, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, the committee, which was, I guess, the, the second meeting, the original committee was five years ago, this one was a review. There were a bunch of great people. They devoted a tremendous amount of time and energy, um, into this. I, I think we got the charter polished up for, you know, another few years. And, uh, I, I really was pleased with the fact that, again, we've got diverse backgrounds, diverse educational, diverse professional, diverse geographic, as far as that goes. And, and this group absolutely worked everything out. It was not a slam dunk on any, any particular item that I can think of. So, uh, I really appreciate the effort that they put. Part of our diverse group, um, is, is diverse in various places, so we've, we've got a fairly limited representation tonight. But thank you very much. Thank you.
Don? So this has for many, many things to do for the town. For Johnson? Mr. Egan?
One is not here, right?
Waters? Nathan? So then I'll give this to Rachel, and they can collect from, Rachel some other time later. Typically, short may go through. Okay, moving on to consent agenda items, one through four. Item number one, department monthly reports for April 2019. Number two, consider approval of minutes for the special meeting of the town council for May 13, 2019. Number three, consider approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the town council for May 13, 2019. Number four, consider approval of minutes for the special meeting of the town council for May 14, 2019. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the staff for the time they put on that monthly report. I know there's a lot of data on there, and so I appreciate, um, the effort you put on that and the new formats, and so I just want to make sure I recognize that, that I do read it. I appreciate, appreciate you spending time on that, so thank you.
Okay, if no one would like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through four as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Allen, to approve consent agenda items one through four. Have you heard the motion? Any additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven zero. Okay, one second, we'll be there. Okay, moving on to item number five, that is to hold a public hearing, discuss and consider, and act upon a request by David Jackson, the Jackson Company, to approve a minor plot for Sunnyvale, Sunnyvale Center, at or about 326 to 330 Clare Road. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council. Um, this site being planted received a plan development, uh, a zone change to a plan development, um, here recently. Uh, the applicant has just returned to finalize the planning for the property. They're actually doing it ahead of the site plan. They do realize that they will have to come back and do a site plan, uh, in accordance with the PD. Um, but this is in order to allow for them to transition the property to the, the new property owner. Um, this will create Lot 8 BR, which will be the site for the proposed building, and in order to do this, they had to revise existing plat for Sunnyvale Center, which was lot, which consisted of Lot 8A and 8B, which were platted in 2008. Um, staff does not see any issues with the proposal. Staff recommends approval, and the planning and zoning commission recommended approval as well.
Did we receive any other additional comments from citizens?
Uh, no. Just one, one comment in favor from a letter that was received.
Council, any questions for Rashad Jackson? Okay. If not, uh, this is the public hearing portion of the agenda. If anyone from the public would like to come and speak, uh, before that, let me call the applicant, uh, Mr. Jackson, David.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Would you like to add anything to the comments Rashad made?
No real comments, like you mentioned, where this is just to get it platted so that it can be sold, uh, hopefully closing be June 18th, and, um, then we'll work on the site plan when the, the owner's ready to start developing.
Gotcha. Council, any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. So I'm, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the council about this application, uh, please come forward. Now one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, other additional discussions or questions on this agenda? Okay, there are no other additional discussions. Can I have a motion with respect to, uh, the request, uh, by David Jackson, the Jackson Company, to approve a minor plat for Sunnyvale Center, at or about 326 to 330 Clare Road?
Motion approved as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve the application as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Have you heard the motion? Other additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Moving on to the next item, that is to hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act upon a request by Walter Jenkins for a specific use designation for amusement, commercial, outdoor use, at or about 150 Lawson Road. Rashad?
Mayor, council, um, this is somewhat of a unique, uh, proposal. Uh, the applicant, uh, submitted an application that requests a specific use designation to reuse the old river bottom, bottom arena site, specifically the corral area, uh, to create a personal use go-kart track and, um, remote control car track. Uh, the applicant has already done some minor cleanup, with regard to just mowing and cleaning up the site. Um, planning and zoning commission reviewed this, uh, noting staff's recommendation to, um, make certain that the, the location was securely boarded up. The applicant has no intentions to use the building. He just wants to use the outdoor corral area. Um, staff recommends approval with some conditions with regard to the building just being secured, um, parking area, if there is an intention to transition this into something more than just personal use, parking area being brought up to standard, uh, standards, and any other details that would be required per our UDO and building code. Um, again, though, the P&amp;Z commission did not recommend any additional details with regard to, or stipulations with regard to this use. Um, they felt like if it's just going to be personal use, allowing them to keep it as is, uh, which staff is fine with that, um, but if and when it expands, we would recommend that improvements be made.
If and when they expand the use, does the applicant need to come back to staff?
If it turns into, well, we could do an amended site plan, or this could be done at staff level, um, when he just comes in and talks to us as far as, or we recognize the use has changed, and he start turning, turning it into a business, we could, um, somewhat hold up the, the, the business in a sense, and, and require him to bring the building up to code.
But the applicant needs to come back to the town? That's my question.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is the way we written this SUD, they said, is that clear? Is that requirement is specified that they need to come back to us?
It's not necessarily specified. Um, it was in my recommendation, if the use expands, but again, the P&amp;Z recommended just allowing it as is, noting the fact that it is just a personal use that he's proposing. That's the unique part of this. He's not proposing a business at this time.
Right.
But I could see this turning into something popular, um, that other people want to use, and of course, he may want to charge them in order to maintain the property.
Right. So I, I saw the staff comment, right? Item number three is when you specify it, right?
Right.
Uh, so it says that the, the applicant shall be responsible for any additional improvement. I got that, right? Once they make the improvement, does they need to come back to town for inspections and approval?
If they're required as part of this, uh, SUD, then yes, uh, he would need to submit proper plans to be reviewed by town, and then we would inspect any driveway approaches or anything like that.
So in other words, they can't just go make the changes and be done with it?
No.
They got to come back to the staff.
At a minimum, it needs to be done, um, to town code. So they would have to come before us and get the, the requirements, and that permit would need to come through the town in order to do those at work.
Got it. Thanks. Mr. Wade?
Yeah, so the P&amp;Z approved it without staff stip, stipulations.
Correct.
Is that your three recommendations?
Yes.
So, those look like pretty good recommendations to me.
But I'm not saying that they were wrong, it's just based on what was described to them, you know, a few felt like this could have been approved at staff level, but at the same time, I was looking at the back end to say, what happens if this becomes popular, what if something?
So this, this is the, the applicant is not the owner of the property.
Correct. But the, the, the owner is aware, um, on our applications, they are required to, to be notarized if he's going to represent the owner, and it is notarized. There was, that was a question of the P&amp;Z commission as well. Is the owner aware?
Yeah, that's a good catch, because when I read it, it does say primarily for personal use.
Yes.
And that was my biggest question is, when is primarily turned into not primarily, and what are we going to do from that point? So, that's a great catch.
Thanks. Thank you.
Council, additional questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one with regards to number two, and that's the staff recommendation proposed for parking area. That's an interesting corner of, of land down there that's used for several different things, and I think by town standards, they would have to pour concrete in an area that's really fixing to be torn up in a short matter of time, and in a period, in a little corner of land that, I, I'm not sure pouring concrete is really apropos for that section. So, I'm not opposed to improvement, I'm just not sure that it's necessary to have them pour concrete for something that's going to be ripped up in some period of time. And we know 190 is going to come through there eventually.
I agree.
So I don't know what your thoughts is on that, or the council is on that, but some of that, some of that area is already undrivable, and they're not going to improve it with putting concrete, and not that this is in that same area, they could improve it with other items, crushed something. So I didn't know what you were getting at, not you, but the staff was getting at with item number two specifically.
I don't have a problem with it remaining as is, especially for personal use, but I know typically with a change of use, or we're, we're bringing in a new use to a building, it has to be brought up to code. So I just wanted to note that typically this would be required to be brought up to code, which would be a concrete parking lot. Now, there are other materials that are acceptable, but they must be approved by P&amp;Z and council. So that, that was my intent, just making everyone aware that the, the standard would be concrete, but it could remain as is, and if and when it becomes, um, a popular destination or transitions, then it would have to be brought up to code.
So code wouldn't necessarily mean concrete, they could apply for variance, or they could fill in that area with crushed granite or whatever, is that right?
Yes.
So, so this is being used primarily for personal use, parenthetically, friends and family. At what point does friends and family become more than personal use? In other words, how many friends can be there before it's, it's not personal use anymore? Or what's the next step? You know, it could become a Sunday afternoon event, but there's 20 or 30 friends.
Right, and that, that was my concern, and staff's concern. Um, I mean, if this was done in somebody's per, personal property, and he had 15 acres, there's nothing that could be said. It's just the fact that this is in the, a commercial property, and it wasn't intended for this use. But I, I don't have an issue with it, but the long-term ramifications could be an issue. I don't know if the property owner, I don't.
I don't think he's here.
The applicant, I don't see him here.
He's here.
He was notified of the meeting, but I don't see him here.
Yeah, applicant is not here. Okay.
Historically, we don't approve these without the applicant being present.
Correct.
I don't know if that's changed.
Okay.
But it's historically not done.
Because you want to hear from the applicant, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask questions?
We can table it to the next council.
Susan, what do you think? Okay. But let's, let's go through the process.
Yeah, I, I think my question certainly revolves around how big does it get before it's no longer personal? Uh, at what level do we have some ability to say, oh, by the way, this is more than what we thought we were approving?
Yeah. Susan, do we need to, if you're going to table it, do we need to open the public hearing, or, or we do, we can do that next time?
No, if you're, if you're tabling it, I would not conduct the public hearing, I'd table it until.
The applicant's not here, okay. Counsel, additional discussions on this one? If not, um, can I have a motion to table this application until the, uh, first meeting in June?
I make a motion to table until, um, the applicant can be here first meeting in June.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, still a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wade.
So they would have to come before us and get the requirements, and that permit would need to come through the town in order to do those at work.
Got it. Thanks. Mr. Wade?
Yeah, so the P and Z approved it without staff stipulations.
Correct.
Is that your three recommendations?
Yes.
So those look like pretty good recommendations to me.
And I'm not saying that they were wrong. It's just based on what was described to them, you know, a few felt like this could have been approved at staff level, but at the same time, I was looking at the back end to say, what happens if this becomes popular? What if something...
So this...
Right.
This is the applicant is not the owner of the property.
Correct. But the owner is aware, on our applications, they are required to be notarized if he's going to represent the owner, and it is notarized. That was a question of the P and Z Commission as well. Is the owner aware?
Yeah, that's a good catch, because when I read it, it does say primarily for personal use.
Yes.
And that was my biggest question is, when is primarily turned into not primarily? And what are we going to do from that point? So that's a great catch.
Thanks. Thank you.
Counsel, additional questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one with regards to number two, and that's the staff recommendation proposed for parking area. That's an interesting corner of land down there that's used for several different things, and I think by town standards, they would have to pour concrete in an area that's really fixing to be torn up in a short matter of time and in a period, in a little corner of land that I'm not sure pouring concrete is really apropos for that section. So I'm not opposed to improvement, I'm just not sure that it's necessary to have them pour concrete for something that's going to be ripped up in some period of time. And we know 190 is going to come through there eventually.
I agree.
So I don't know what your thoughts is on that, or the council is on that, but some of that, some of that area is already undrivable, and they're not going to improve it with putting concrete. And not that this is in that same area, they could improve it with other items, crushed something. So I didn't know what you were getting at, not you, but the staff was getting at with item number two specifically.
I don't have a problem with it remaining as is, especially for personal use, but I know typically with a change of use or we're bringing in a new use to a building, it has to be brought up to code. So I just wanted to note that typically this would be required to be brought up to code, which would be a concrete parking lot. Now, there are other materials that are acceptable, but they must be approved by P and Z and council. So that was my intent, just making everyone aware that the standard would be concrete, but it could remain as is, and if and when it becomes a popular destination or transitions, then it would have to be brought up to code.
So code wouldn't necessarily mean concrete. They could apply for variance, or they could fill in that area with crushed granite or whatever. Is that right?
Yes.
So this is being used primarily for personal use, parenthetically, friends and family. At what point does friends and family become more than personal use? In other words, how many friends can be there before it's not personal use anymore? Or what's the next step? You know, it could become a Sunday afternoon event, but there's 20 or 30 friends.
Right, and that was my concern and staff's concern. I mean, if this was done in somebody's personal property, and he had 15 acres, there's nothing that could be said. It's just the fact that this is in a commercial property, and it wasn't intended for this use. But I don't have an issue with it, but the long-term ramifications could be an issue. I don't know if the property owner...
I don't think he's here.
The applicant, I don't see him here. He was notified of the meeting, but I don't see him here.
Yeah, applicant is not here.
Historically, we don't approve these without the applicant being present.
Correct.
I don't know if that's changed.
Okay.
But it's historically not done.
Because you want to hear from the applicant, right?
Yes.
So we can hear...
Can ask questions.
We can table to the next council.
Susan, what do you think? Okay. But let's go through the process.
Yeah, I think my question certainly revolves around how big does it get before it's no longer personal? At what level do we have some ability to say, oh, by the way, this is more than what we thought we were approving?
Yep. Susan, do we need to, if you're going to table it, do we need to open the public hearing? Or we do, we can do that next time?
No, if you're tabling it, I would not conduct the public hearing. I'd table it until...
Counsel, additional discussions on this one? If not, can I have a motion to table this application until the first meeting in June?
I make a motion to table until the applicant can be here first meeting in June.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Wade to table the application from Walter Jenkins for an S U D for an amusement, commercial, outdoor use at or about 150 Lawson Road until the first meeting in June. Have anyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven to zero. Thank you, Rashad. Moving on to item number seven, that is to hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act upon an amendment to residential fence standards. The first reading of an ordinance amending the town Unified Development Ordinance, Ordinance 17 dash 09, duly passed by the town council on March 26, 2018, as amended from time to time, so as to review and amend Section 3.06 zoning development regulations, specifically Section 3.06 or 5 fence standard, as well as any other associated sections. Turned over, Mr. Jackson again.
Mayor, Council. In February 2019, town council adopted revised regulations that allow exceptions for fences along open space areas that directly abutted right-of-way. The revision allowed for privacy fencing instead of the required 50% open fencing for open spaces that directly abut right-of-way. Intent was to further screen homes along certain right-of-ways to provide backyard privacy for homeowners and for, not necessarily hold them accountable with regard to, some of these open space areas weren't necessarily what you would call open space areas. They're not used by the public, they're just more so buffer areas. I kind of explained in the memo and in the exhibits that majority of the time, from a planning standpoint, the open space areas that require abutting fencing to be 50% open are actively used open space areas, parks, trails going through there. It provides a sense of security for both who use the open space areas and those who are abutting that area. Sunnyvale had a unique approach to the ordinance for Stony Creek and the Homestead, in which all those properties required 50% open space, I mean, 50, 25-foot open space areas along the exterior of the development. Previous staff interpreted that that open space, whether it's buffer, used or not, required 50% open fencing along it. So that provided visibility along those right-of-ways, which aesthetically, some people liked, some people didn't like. That was how this new regulation was addressing that type of issue. But of course, there's a long-ranging ramifications of it, just because it's not how it has been interpreted in the past. Staff was asked to bring this back just to, for council and P and Z to review it. I propose several options here, not necessarily making a recommendation, just options of how that we could possibly approach this. P and Z recommended option number two, which is to return the regulation back to its original language and interpretation. And the interpretation is key in how it has been interpreted in the past, as far as those buffer areas. Now, I can't say that, I can't say that interpretation has been consistent, because even in Stony Creek, along Stony Creek Boulevard, you have areas that have the alley and the screening, and they're classified as open space in the plat, but they have wood fencing along that area. So the new staff has gotten here, and we saw how it was actually being done. I felt like, okay, this is how it's been interpreted for long range, it just doesn't make sense to change it at this point unless P and Z and council felt like it needed to be changed. So that's how this happened. And so I'll leave it at that. P and Z recommended option number two, that creates specific regulations for certain roadways. That's just something I, throughout, I would say it's an approach, but at the same time, you have some that are upset, residents who are upset that why are they getting to do this and I have to do this? Now, that's the only thing I could say that would be a concern for me on the implementation of that. The other one, screening walls, is a long-range approach, like with the Luton Farms or the Homestead and Stony Creek, that might be an issue transitioning, but that probably have to be a joint venture, but it could be an opportunity with Stony Creek, especially with the expansion of Collins Road, to include that type of screening wall in that project, if that's something that council wanted to look forward to.
Rashad, it's a mixed batch basically in town, right? Some places along the Stony Creek, it's covered fencing, but along the Jobson, it's mostly open fencing, except one or two.
Stony Creek has a mix. The only reason why is it's solid fencing along Stony Creek Boulevard.
Okay.
On Jobson and North Collins Road, it's open fencing.
Okay.
Homestead...
So the same rule was interpreted differently?
Yes. Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Wade?
You mentioned alleys, so even though the plat may designate an alley as open space, that's typically not open space. That's an alley, correct?
Right.
So privacy fence might be deemed desirous.
Yes.
As opposed to open space along a true green space or through a designated buffer area.
Correct.
So explain what happened along Stony Creek Boulevard. How did that end up with privacy fences?
I couldn't tell you what previous staff was thinking, but, you know, it made sense in the fact that there is an alley, you have the fence, then the alley, then the screening. So that even if there was an open space that was going to be used, it's far enough away that it's not necessarily abutting that open space, even though it's on the plat noted as open space. It's really based on how it was defined in the ordinance as well.
Remember, Rashad, I thought Stony Creek and Homestead both, exactly the way it was supposed to be built, was built into the ordinance that allowed those developments to happen. And that was pretty much fixed in casting concrete, so to speak. So how do we have within one development, particularly Stony Creek, how do we have open fencing facing Collins Road? But along Stony Creek Boulevard, you've got wood fencing.
I really couldn't answer that.
I mean, can, is it because of the way it was written into the ordinance that it can be interpreted either way?
Not necessarily. It's just, I believe people looked at the design of it and just interpreted their way. It's the build, the staff at the time. I don't want to...
Well, that's saying that it wasn't specifically identified in the ordinance.
The ordinance for Stony Creek and the Homestead call out a certain percentage of open space that's required throughout the entire development. So just that in itself say as that any area that was designated these buffer areas or anything, the developer's going to call it open space.
Well, I'm, okay, I want to go a step back. I want to go all the way to the fence itself.
Okay.
Which, that's what I'm kind of relating to, because that's where the question comes up, is the fence itself.
To my knowledge, there's no specific talk about required fencing in...
Of how the fence is supposed to be built?
Right.
And how open it's supposed to be?
Outside of, I know Stony Creek Phase Three, Track Three, and Track Five have, I believe in their H O A documents where it has to have open fencing. If you, if you go down over by the pond area, you'll see, they all have open fencing. The Stony Creek Track Five, Phase 5A, Robin Ridge, all has open fencing.
Right.
And those are the larger lot phases. Once you get across the street on Collins, the other ones, the smaller lot phases, do not have that requirement unless you go to then our base ordinance, which stipulates that 50%.
Yeah, the base ordinance opens everything up, so you can do whatever you want to do there.
Mr. Freeman?
Rashad, so on Jobson, you know, if you go into Homestead, right? So you got the Homestead, the very last part of Jobson, right before you get to town east. All of those houses that go up against Jobson all have open fencing. If you look at the new houses that are coming in from Stony Creek, on Jobson, literally directly across the street, they have board-on-board fencing on the exact same street.
Those were done under the new ordinance since February. That's the reason, those fences came in right after that ordinance was adopted, so of course, the builders wanted to put up privacy fencing. So so far, we have two.
Right.
One on either end, one about Stony Creek Boulevard, and one by Mitchell. And if we change it now, in between will be the, back to the open fencing. Stony Creek 2F, which is south of Stony Creek Boulevard, they haven't even started building yet, but they have some permits that are in. So right now would be the time to, if we're going to transition back, be the time to transition back or allow to keep, continue to move forward as is.
Mr. Allen?
So I'm not sure from my perspective, when we pass this, this fence ordinance, that I was on board with exactly the way that it's come up. And after I talked to several other people, I think some, perhaps some other people on the council maybe wasn't fully aware of the interpretation that we ended up with. Not that everything we talked about was not good. It just came, quite honestly, to one of the council meetings when Councilman Wade asked the question about the house on Jobson Road, how did we get wood fence on that house? So after we kept going back and forth, he said, oh, because y'all changed the ordinance. I did not take that our change was interpreted that way, and it may have been, and I acknowledged that. So to me, the question is, what did we approve, and what's our expectation? And after talking to several people throughout the town, somewhere, and of course, Stony Creek's a great example of differences, common area designated or open area that's designated required the 50% fence, or what's, what I think most people interpret as wrought iron, it may not be. I think the question is, what was open and what's common and that's different, I get that. But it came very evident when Jobson Road and Collins were obviously all open, that now we started closing them in. So I think the fair question is, is that what we really wanted in our town? And is that what the expectation of what we passed a few months ago was? You know, I get it, in Stony Creek, we got several variances, several ways that it's interpreted, several different types of scenarios are up, and maybe we just, it is where it is. But my question to the council is, is this what we want to be in the future? From my perspective, Sunnyvale is open. Sunnyvale keeps Sunnyvale, Sunnyvale, but then we start putting wooden fences up. And there's a lot of reasons for that, maybe privacy, maybe, maybe it's for security, maybe. I don't know what the answer is, and we can talk about that all that long, but it came to a point when those wood fences on Jobson Road came up, and I was kind of shocked to see that. And I don't think he wants to propose in taking it down, but I think the understanding from my perspective, this council, the staff in our town, we need to be really clear on what we're doing. Are we putting wood fences up in Sunnyvale? Did we take away all those requirements? Was that what the intent of that was? And if not, then we need to clarify that so that we're all on the same track, going the same way. And quite honestly, I thought most of what we talked about last time was commercial discussion. There was some discussion, reference fence post in or out. I think we had some really good discussions about that. I'm not even suggesting we even entertained that. To me, the question is, what was our expectation on open areas and common areas? Because I think when you start looking at a lot more wooden fences, it changes that open look that we thought we had. So I just think we need to be really clear and really open. Is that what we wanted? And if not, now's the time to clarify that. We aired, that's not what we wanted, or that is what we wanted, and we move forward. So to me, it's pretty simple. Are we wanting wooden fences, or are we wanting open fences on designated common, designated open areas? What does that mean?
Mr. Wade?
It seems very clear, if you read the last sentence in our current regulations, somehow we got in there, fences adjacent to dedicated open space and abutting right-of-way are exempt from the 50% rule. So we somehow specifically exempted what we're trying to get back to where we used to be. I can't, I don't know why we did that, don't know that I even remember doing it, but that's the very fences that we're trying to keep open, if we want them open.
I agree with you, Jim.
So this weekend, I drove around a lot, and I drove up and down Bobtown Road, and they have, going out towards Route 30, they have closed fences. And then I drove up and down Trip. Once you leave Sunnyvale heading west, you have a whole section all the way down to Galloway where there's closed fences. And I'm not really a fan of it, you know, it's not what Sunnyvale looks like right now, but my concern is if we leave it the way it is, it will start looking like that. You'll just have these walls of wooden fences up and down. And again, look at Bobtown Road going up towards 30, and look at Trip heading west. So I'm in favor of changing, however it change, whatever. I think moving forward, the question for me is, what do we want the fences to look like moving forward? And I'm a fan of having open fences, so I'm a fan of changing it back or at least change it where we're going that direction.
Additional discussions on this topic?
Mayor?
Say again?
This, Susan, I've had a few conversations about this over the past couple of weeks, and in fact, I don't know if you may recall when we were going out on our field trip last week, the council field trip that we were all invited to go to. We drove through an area up in, oh my gosh, I've already forgotten it. Up in the Colony where, and we actually have an example of this in our town, and I think this is more of what we would probably like to see. Number one, y'all have heard me say before, I hate driving down Collins Road and looking into people's backyards, and they've got open fences. When we were going up through the Colony, and we've got this dilemma, where do you put a privacy fence versus where's the main arterial road versus this? You can't do anything about what I call internal surface streets, but arterial roads, I think, are the ones that are important because they lend to our town. Actually, about a month or six weeks ago, I was driving out by the airport and ran into a, I think it's part of MacArthur, that's in the more residential area where it's a winding road. Unfortunately, we don't have any winding, four-lane or six-lane divided, or all of ours will always be straight. But to the one side of the road where you have the houses, the houses were set equally as close as what our houses are that we see along Collins Road, but there's a berm between the road and the house. And the berm is such that when you're going down the furthest lane away from that berm, the angle that you can see across and to the house that's just the other side of that berm is to look at the bottom of the soffit. You can't see the windows on the first floor. Our backyards are about as deep as the ones that we've got here. What we saw going into the Colony was exactly the same thing, and fortunately, theirs did more like this. There were more hill-like areas and dips and valleys and things like that that gave you that rolling hill characteristic, I think is what we all want to try to maintain as best we can. We actually have that already done to a certain degree along the Smith property, where dirt was brought in, a berm was built. Subsequently, I don't think they're going to move those berms whenever they develop, whatever they do develop if it were going to be residential. And you could get the equivalent type of building in there as what those two others I just described. Now, the way you, what we have to do in order to accomplish that is we've got to drive people, drive developers and developments to allow for more space and give them credit for it being open space if we need to, but allow that open space to be paralleling along those arterial roads. And I think that, and in a way, what Hillwood is wanting to do and what we saw in our field trip, that anybody was welcome to come along with, it just happened, it turned out just to be primarily council and some of the staff. Jeez, I just lost my train of thought.
Is the berm part of the open space?
The berm would, well, in order for us to accomplish it, the berm would have to be a part of the open space. What, the way, and I'm not saying pro or contoured what Hillwood's doing right now, but with what they have shown us and the pod concept of multiple pods... but with what they have shown us and the pod concept of multiple pods throughout their development, they will achieve effectively the same thing and have the opportunity to achieve the same thing by berming and particularly along Town East. You could get some berms in there, and these could be walking berms. They're not just going to be a straight line berm like the one that the Smiths have up against the lake, that they, it's up against Polly.
Polly Road.
But this is a way, it's a tremendous step to get to where I'm talking to from where we are, and we're not going to fix what's already on the ground. But, and we don't have that much arterial room, arterial roadway to have to deal with. But I think that we need to try to take advantage of what arterial road that we have to deal with along the way. So, give the developer a little more credit for putting that open space up against the arterials, because quite frankly, as a visitor to the town or somebody just driving through my town, I can't see into that person's backyard, and that guy doesn't have to worry about whoever it might be driving up and down the arterial road looking into their backyard. Does everybody get a comprehension of the concept I'm talking about here? Because we all had an opportunity to see it, I probably should have picked up the phone and said, "Hey, everybody, look at the berms, look at how the houses are, look at those relationships," because it's, it gets you to where I think we want to get to as an overall picture and view of our town.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, I like the berms. There's some good-looking berms, I, I think it really made a nice, nice environment. So, I agree on the berms.
I think from a design intent, what happened here was what was trying to be done with the Colony, except the, the buffer wasn't large enough.
Buffer was not large enough?
They weren't large enough.
To have a berm?
To have the berm or have the, the visual effect that you're looking for. You wanted to not necessarily see, you wanted a natural landscape where you wouldn't even know there's homes over there, you needed a larger space. But 25 feet, 50 feet wasn't going to do it.
Okay. I think at some level, that's what we were expecting out of Stony Creek and Homestead, that's why there was such an uproar, where they, they tore down all those trees that were acting as a natural barrier
Right.
between the homes and the, and the driveway. So, again, again, to me, it's, what do we want those fences to look like? And in the future developments, berms are okay with me, I don't care, have them put trees up and, and shed that, and yeah, one of mine's an open fence, so I'm not arguing for or against it. I just learned to put some trees up in the landscape and to block that. So, if you buy a house and you have to have an open fence then, then you bought the house knowingly that you have an open fence. So it's kind of hard to argue, in my opinion, but they should have privacy. Well, don't buy the fence if it's, don't buy that house if it's an issue, or landscape it, as some people have done. So I, again, it just goes back to what do we want, and I don't know how to fix it, other than maybe going back to eliminating the sentence that Jim referenced too, and, and so we go back to where that is and then put the expectation on the developers to put the berms in, the rolling stones, they can treat it, I don't, doesn't matter to me. So I, I think that's where we're at, is what do we do with that, that one line? Is it to be in there or not to be in there? And I think to me, that's the question for where we're at right now.
Falling in line with what, I'm sorry. Falling in line with what P&amp;Z recommended and what staff has interpreted the, the regulation to be in the past, it makes sense to go back to option number two. And then as we move forward with the Lupton Development and the future developments, I think that's an opportunity to really increase that buffer and, and use the berms and different elements for screening.
So, let me ask you this real quick. If, if we go back to option two, and P&amp;Z was a 7-0 without a whole lot of comment, as I understand, is what the document said, then the only active street that we're talking about right now under development is really Jobson, is that right, or am I missing something?
Uh, yes.
And maybe some of that Stony Creek and phase?
Jobson, Town East
5A or something.
And North, North Collins. So you still have Track 3 that will have the same situation as well. There's going to be an exit road with Stony Creek Boulevard as it loops around on the other side of Collins, comes back to Stony Creek directly south of Town East.
So we're really talking about the roads on Collins and Jobson at this point?
Right.
It's not developed, and in the future developments such as Hillwood, we PD whatever we want to do in there.
Right, they'll, they'll probably, if they want to address that regulation, because it's going to be our base regulation, then yes, they'll, they'll change it and propose what they want.
Okay, thank you.
If, if that's the case, how do we deal with lots that are on the south side of Spring Hill, Spring Lake Estates, opening towards the Glacier property? I realize that's not open space
No, but-
for Glacier, for, uh, Spring Lake Estates, but it is open space for the town.
It is open space. No matter who owns the property, whether it's in the development or not, it is supposed to be interpreted that, that fencing that's abutting it remains open. I believe that's noted in the, on the-
So all of the lots that are on the outside of Spring Lake Estates should have open fencing?
Yes.
Including those that would back up to the future of the falls
If there's-
and Stony Creek.
If there's open space next to it, yes.
Don't worry, it still require acre or more to have open fencing?
I would need to look into that.
I believe that was the requirement if it was acre or more.
An acre or more?
An acre or more residential lot, we required open fencing. I thought that was what it was.
Look, old ordinance had that stipulation, I can't remember if it was changed.
Are you thinking all the Homestead houses are one acre along the Jobson?
No, the Spring Lake Estates are all more than acre, or an acre or more.
They're all one acre.
Right. Okay.
Rashad, the question I have is, if we decide to pass this and we get it kind of back where it was, we still have those two houses that have board-on-board fencing. Is there anything we can do to get that back? Is that, would that be something the town would have to pay for? Is that something that the developer would have to go back and do? Or are they just going to have wood on wood or board-on-board fencing?
They are going to have board-on-board fencing.
So then it would be board-on-board with open fencing to board-on-board fencing, basically two fences in the area that, that did not, okay.
From aesthetics, I think we're at a good point where those are at the end, so it's not going to look completely terrible with, to have the rest of them have open fencing. Now, if you have sporadic, then yes.
Well, and, and also, they have really large trees that go right by the side of those properties, plus they've got bushes they put up in between the trees and the fences as well.
Right, right. And keep in mind, I mean, those homes have transitioned over to, that's somebody's house now, so it's, it's not in the builder's hands.
So what would happen if they replaced their fence? Would they, if we changed this to option two and they replaced their fence, would they fall under the change, the current?
If they replace more than 75%, then yes.
Counsel, additional discussions on this topic? Okay, this is a, a public hearing agenda item, so at this time I'm going to call for public comments. If anyone would like to come forward and talk about this particular agenda item, please Now, when it's coming forwards, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, are there additional discussions on this topic? So staff has given four options. Option one, to keep the current regulation as is. Number two, is to go back to what we had before, and that's what P&amp;Z agreed upon, P&amp;Z watered 7-0 to go back to the original language and interpretation. Then the three is to create a specific regulation for certain roadways, and the four is the screening boards.
So is there ability to amend that?
Absolutely.
So, I, I think we ought to go back to number two, but include a budding right-of-way, so that we capture Stony, Stony Creek Boulevard, because that is a four-lane thoroughfare. It may not be called an arterial, but it's a four-lane thoroughfare.
So how would, how would the line create to be?
So, we're, it might read, "Where fencing is placed adjacent to the dedicated open space are a budding right-of-way, open fencing with openings that do not cover more than 50%." So you're just adding "are a budding right-of-way."
Mr. Wade, can I just clarify? Would that refer to those properties that have an alley behind them?
Susan, I don't really think, I won't be very careful there, because we don't allow alleys, and we don't require alleys unless it's a ultra-small lot. I can't remember the dimensions. So we wouldn't have an alley in a one-acre lot. Alleys are very sparse in our town. So if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot, I'd be a little hesitant to make you require open fencing, because people are going to be right there on your patio. And alleys are not going to be, do we have any alleys that are on a major thoroughfare?
I think the comparative, sorry, my drawing, we've got Stony Creek Boulevard-
So, Leslie, can you speak on the mic, please?
Can you show this so we can see? I'll just come up and show this, okay?
Sorry, and Rashad may correct me, but I think it's, we've got Stony Creek Boulevard, which is then adjacent to open space, which is then adjacent to an alley, which is then the fencing. So, those fences abut an alleyway. They neither abut the right-of-way or open space for Stony Creek Boulevard.
Right. Like I said, some of this quote-unquote "open space" was truly just common area, and, but it's been interpreted as open space. So that's where this issue has to come in. So when you say open space, even when it's not truly open space, staff is going to interpret it to where that's going to require 50% open fencing. Now, my concern is, if you just, are you, are you, are you wanting to do open space, common areas, and right-of-ways? Do you want to require 50%, 50% open fencing along right-of-ways? Because that's, that, the way-
I don't want to, but we've started that process. We have that on Jobson, we have that on Town East.
Well, the, the way we would interpret it, just going with option two is the way it was interpreted in the past. So you wouldn't necessarily have to put in right-of-ways, because my concern is, if you put in right-of-ways, then another development comes in and we're going to require open fencing for right-of-ways.
Okay, so that's a risk.
Yes.
Can we define it specifically? Is the right-of-way the alley portion that you're talking about?
No, we can provide clarification there and there where-
I, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but if it's an alley abutted to an open area, probably, I don't know, probably don't want that opened from a fencing perspective, I, I wouldn't think.
And that's essentially-
Personally, I think if we did that, put the "or" in there, as, as Jim referenced, and then eliminated the alleyway-
But that's getting us privacy fences along Stony Creek.
Yeah, and, and to your point, I think you're right, but there's only one small section where there is an alley that's not already developed, because we already have wooden fences there already, so we're kind of locked in. So then we're talking about the future, is that, I think it's one road that has an alley. Is that right? Does anybody know right off?
Stony Creek Boulevard is the only road along-
But it's not both sides, is it? It's only one section? It is, both sides, once you get past the first group of houses. It's going to be alley on both sides, it's the way I go to drive home. This side, you've got a walkway, an alley, and wooden fences, and on this side, you've got a walkway, you've got an alley and wooden fences. You have trees on both sides, but at the same time, you do have-
Alley behind the fence?
Um, yeah, there, there's the fence, alley, and then you have the trees, walkway. So, I mean, it, it's pretty much on, once you get past that first development of houses, as you start going out, it's on both sides.
If you look at that Stony Creek, which I'm looking at on the map now, I don't disagree that that should be, I don't have a problem with it being closed fencing, as a whole, granted, that's, so you're considering open space right by that sidewalk, so between the roadway and the fence, that's been defined as open space or not?
On the plat, it was defined as open space, because it was meeting the criteria of the ordinance. So that was their open space to meet that 15%, 14%. So, it provided confusion with previous staff on where the 50% open fencing was. The only caveat to that was, the exception was that there was an alley there. So, they interpreted the correct way, but then you went to Jobson and you went to North Collins Road, and you have another buffer open space area, and they required 50% open. Even though in my mind, that's not necessarily an area that would require that, because it's not an open space area that is heavily trafficked or, there's no sidewalk, it's, it's next to a right-of-way. But in order for us to move forward, I think we can continue to interpret that way. This development is pretty much built out, and we have maybe one more phase that's going to be a budding North Collins to the north. And my staff is aware of your, what you want as far as moving forward, and we can address any other issues with future developments as, as they come forth with a PD or how, whenever they come forth with the development itself. I don't think we're going to address every situation with, with this regulation.
I'm just wondering, because I hear you say a lot, "We have to interpret, we have to, you know, look at," and so, and I, and I, I understand it's difficult, and what I want to know is, is there a way that we can word this ordinance that helps you understand more clearly our intent and what we're trying to do? Because it seems like we're putting you in a bad place by some of the language we're using. I'm not sure it's-
Not necessarily-
I just want to make sure we keep you, we make, helps the staff be successful in how they interpret whatever, where our intent is.
No, this, it's fine, maybe I'm, it's not necessarily confusing, because the key word here is dedicated open space. So no matter what, if it's used or not by pedestrians, it just says dedicated open space. I was just giving background on what is typically defined as open space.
Well, I know, it just seems like there's been some confusion, and, and I hear you say previous staff thinks, and how we've interpreted things, and I think that can be the ambiguity of what we put in place. And I just want to make sure if there's some way we can help you be more successful with your staff and how you interpret this, then that's what we should do, is we should, we should be clear in our intent and put it down so that we can help you be successful in how it's interpreted, so that we have uniformity throughout the town, which is what our intent is, I believe, is just have to be uniform. And so, I'm just looking for you to say, "This is good, this is not good, here's what I suggest with, with what you've heard our intent is overall."
I think this is good for now. If, if I have a concern, I'll definitely bring it back and propose some new language.
So Rashad, what you're saying is the way it, the two, option two is written is good?
Yes, yes.
Anyone from the council disagree?
Okay, just, just for clarity, the section that's not built yet on Jobson, the Stony Creek, I'm sorry, Stony Creek section that ties into Jobson, would that be built along the, the parkway as is currently built with, with wooden fences?
What's along, along Stony Creek Boulevard, Section 2F?
No, you're talking about the side by Jobson, correct? On Jobson Road. This road here, this is not developed yet, would this be as this with wooden fences here?
Yeah, I mean, everything is facing Stony Creek Boulevard. If we interpret it, I would rely on that these would be wood fences.
So this, this, just so we don't get, we need to clarify that, so they'll, how you're interpreting that. I don't disagree with you, but-
Okay.
Just so we know.
Okay.
Is that clear for you, Mr. Allen?
Yeah, so-
So Rashad, go to that. What kind of fencing will Homestead 3A be required to have? Since the alley they're going to face, the alley that they're going to back up to is not in their development.
It'd be wood fence.
They'll be allowed to have wood fences?
Yes. Yes. It's no open space, no other requirement that says otherwise, unless it says something in the ordinance.
So the detention pond that is back there will be gone?
Yeah, that's a temporary, my understand, temporary detention pond, and there's already the infrastructure in there that's leading that water underneath Jobson over to Glacier Pond. And they worked with the Spring Lake Developer in order to get that done. So they just decided to keep that detention pond there, because that was somewhat there during that time span before it was even developed. And ever since that, and just kind of get back, ever since that was done, we haven't had any complaints from the residents for flooding at all.
Right.
So the detention pond is not doing any service at, at this time, right? It's not serving any purpose?
I can't, I'm not engineer, I just know that it was kept there.
There is water standing.
There is water standing? A lot of it just living?
Not in the detention pond, but in other spots there, along- Not in the detention pond, but in other spots there along the area of 3A.
Okay.
But they'll have wood fences, is what the answer to that question is, is they'll have the ability to put up wood fences.
Right. I can double-check that, but that is my understanding. I don't see anything. Only thing that the ordinance said that they couldn't access it.
No access to the alley.
As far as vehicles, I'm sure somebody have a gate to go out there and mow the back strip there, if they have a strip back there.
No vehicle access.
Right.
Counsel, are there additional discussions on this topic?
I will say Mr. Allen noted that as we go down Stony Creek Boulevard, those homes will still have the wood fencing even in the new phases. The areas that will have the 50% open will be along Jobson and North Collins.
On the Stony, along the Stony Creek, it will be wooden fences.
Yes.
Or on the Jobson side, it'll be open.
Yes. Kind of like the way it is now.
And that's all Stony Creek 2?
2, Track 2.
But that's the only place that Stony Creek will have that.
Mm-hmm. I would hate to change it now. 2E, he has already started that process, and they have wood fencing along that portion.
But the abutting section up to Jobson, it's back open fencing.
Back to open fencing.
I think we are where we are.
Okay. All right, if that's the case, then can I have a motion with respect to?
Mayor, make a motion that the-
Let me finish it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, you stopped.
Yes, yes, I did. The first reading of, so Susan, this is the first reading, right? We still make a motion, and if it's approved, we put them in the consent agenda. Is that the plan?
We have that option.
Okay.
We have that option, however, and you can also hear it again and provide opportunity for public input on the second reading as well. But you do want to vote on this reading.
Got it. Just one second, Ms. Allen, and you're ready to go. Okay, can I have a motion with respect to ordinance 19-14 as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion in just a second. Councilman Mr. Wade, do we want to put "or" in there as you recommended, or are you good the way it is?
I think, based on what Rashad said, that makes some confusion. It's better left like it is.
Are you, as is?
Or if we put "or" abutting right-of-way?
Yeah.
So Ms. Allen, when you make a motion, if you could pick the option, and say which option you recommend, that'd be helpful. The option 2 is to return to the-
I think my motion would be to use option 2 as is written.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
All right.
So Mr. Wade, all right, because a motion to return to the original as an option 2 as written currently.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Allen to approve ordinance 19-14 with the option 2 as the preferred option. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jonathan. Everyone heard the motion?
Just discussion about that, Larry?
Yes, sir.
Is, is that means that when we do Stony Creek 5, C, D, and E, that we're going to end up with closed fencing and potentially against open fencing across Nance Road from Stony Creek 4. Is that what we want?
I think Rashad referenced that you could interpret that, and that would be open fence since it's already open on the other side, and we're not mixing, it'll be open to open there, right?
I'm a little-
On Nance Road, where you have open on the homes that are already there, the new road that'll be coming down, they'll be open on both sides there because you're going to interpret it, that you're going to continue what we've already started there, is that right?
On Nance Road, now, Nance Road on that side has open fencing, but that was a requirement of the ordinance. That is a screening fence for that Track 4, that is actually the gated portion, I think, if that's what we're talking about.
But what do you end up with across Nance Road when you do?
Track 5.
Stony Creek 5E at that point?
I'll need to look at the regulation, but if it's similar to 5A and 5B, they have a requirement for open fencing, and hopefully staff will remind them of that. Now, that's-
What does that mean, hopefully staff will remind?
We know that-
I'm just messing with you, Rashad.
Not me personally.
So I would stay with the motion that I had, as is, as option 2.
Second by Mr. Jonathan. Everyone heard the motion? Any additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed 7-0.
And that's to put it on consent agenda, correct?
That is, yes. I agree with the consent agenda.
Okay.
If any of the councilmembers think it needs to be pulled, then we can pull it at that time. Okay, moving on to the eighth, item number eight, that is to discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution authorizing the creation of a police department. That be Ms. Black or Ms. Catherine?
We're going to do it as a tag team.
All right.
So just to set the Wayback Machine, if you remember back to your retreat around this time of year last year, one of the priorities that was set by council was for staff to work towards getting a study done about establishing our own police department. And I wasn't here, but I'm surmising that that was as a result of the rising costs that were charged from the county. I believe in 2017, the price that we pay went up by $728,000 in one year. And then it has stayed at that and levels above that. We are waiting right now, I should probably know what our charge for the coming year will be, but we are expecting another increase. In addition to, my understanding is that for at least five years, the Dallas County has asked us to please no longer use their services as we are the only town that they provide DSO services to in the manner that they do for us. So you all directed staff to contract with a group to do a study to give information about how we could go about establishing a police department. Staff contracted with Matrix Consulting Group in November of 2018, and then in February of 2019, you all appointed a citizen committee, there were 12 people on that committee that have been meeting for the last three months to assess what really we can do as a community to address our police services. I think the scope in the beginning, and there are a few members of that committee in the room, but the scope in the beginning was kind of this assumption of, well, here are several options that we can do. And I think over the course of the study, one by one, those options were kind of crossed off the list until what was left standing was establishing our own police department. That's, in the last meeting of the police subcommittee, they did vote to bring forward this resolution to you. And what the resolution says is that we acknowledge that we need to establish a police department and that we're setting a timeline to begin that process. On the 10th of June, we'll be bringing forth the whole results of this study, which outline personnel needs, costs, timeline, the complete scope of what it's going to take to set up this police department. Today, you're just voting for a resolution to say, "yes, we acknowledge we must do this," and that here is a proposed timeline. And we are proposing initial operations up by October 2020 with full implementation by October 2021. And I want to tell you, the faster we do it, the less it's going to cost us, because the longer we take to implement, the more overlay and duplicate services we have. So, you know, our recommendation is going to be to move with all speed while we're preserving public safety. I just really, really want to stress to everyone that this is not something that we want. We love DSO, and, you know, myself, the mayor, and councilmember Ryan went and met with the chief's staff and reiterated, you know, we love having you here, and, you know, it is not us desiring to leave their services. I think it's definitely, you know, that they want, it's time for us to move on as a community. So I just want to stress that. The other thing is, I think we openly kind of joked with their staff that we would do whatever we could to retain any of their officers that serve us now and try to bring those on to our staff. So today before you is the resolution. This basically empowers staff to move forward with some of the actions, including working with Mesquite towards establishing our dispatch on a broader scale than just with fire. And it also allows us to show good faith to the county that we are taking their recommendations to heart.
So Susan, just to summarize, again, this is the recommendation from the citizens committee after they explored various options.
Yes, and this is-
Knowing the direction from the Dallas County is that Sunnyvale will go from our own police department, and they are, they want to be out of the DSO support business, right?
That's correct, sir. And in addition to that, you know, originally, we had thought, well, maybe there's another adjacent community that wants to provide these services to us, and I think that was a pretty clear no, that that was not going to be an option available to us. And so, you know, like I said, one by one, we came to the conclusion that there weren't a lot of other options. And, you know, is it going to be a monumental task? Yes. Is it doable? Yes, other cities have done this, and we have already got the ball well-rolling. The committee looked closely already at staffing needs, what can we do to, at a minimum, maintain the service levels we have, if not increase them? We've already been in contact with TECOL about certification for accreditation for the police department. So the ball is well-rolling, and we just wanted to kind of take a moment to say, you know, this is where we're headed, and as part of the budget process, we will be establishing the budget need to make this happen. So this is you telling us, yes, we understand that this is where we have to head, please, staff, continue in that manner.
And Ryan Finch, proud to Mayor, Finch was a member of the citizens committee. Mr. Finch, any comments you want to make?
No, I just reiterate what Susan has said, that, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at all the options, we know that the consultant looked at all the options, and unfortunately, here's where we are. And I think this resolution, which was adopted unanimously by the police subcommittee when we presented it to them, I think we've reached that conclusion as well, is that we really have no choice to move. And I think this resolution is a representation to the county that we are serious in our actions and that we recognize that we need to move forward and basically representing to them officially that we are taking that action. And so I don't know if Debbie has anything to add.
Anything else to add, Ms. Guys? Debbie, guys, is also a member of the citizens committee. Thank you for your service. Okay. Counsel, are there any discussions on this, or questions on this item? The resolution states, the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas Resolution 19-18, a resolution of the town council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, authorizing the creation of a police department. Whereas the town council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas approved a contract with the Matrix Consulting Group to review the options related to the delivery of-
I shouldn't read this. I'm going to read a bad one.
Oh, it's an amended one, thank you, sir. Okay, the amended one, this is the latest. The Town of Sunnyvale, Texas Resolution 19-18, a resolution of the town council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, authorizing the creation of a police department. Whereas the town council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, approved a contract with the Matrix Consulting Group to review the options related to the delivery of law enforcement services. And whereas the town council appointed a citizens focus group to review and provide input on the research and evaluations conducted by Matrix Consulting Group. And whereas the citizen focus group and Matrix Consulting Group recommend the town create a police department to provide law enforcement services to the town. And whereas the town council has recognized and enhanced, that enhancing public safety is a strategic, is a strategy in the town's strategic plan. And whereas the Sunnyvale Town Council has identified maintaining safe neighborhoods as a priority in the town's comprehensive plan. And whereas the Sunnyvale Town Council acknowledges that creating a town police department will help achieve these goals, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Sunnyvale is hereby authorized to create a town police department and that the town manager is hereby directed to carry out the execution of the requirements for creation of such a department with a goal to stand up initial operations by October 2020 and complete full implementation by October 2021. Passed and approved this 28th day of May 2019. Sajid George, Mayor, attested by Rachel Ramsey, Town Secretary. Counsel, any discussions or comments on the resolution 19-18?
I just want to say thank you for our current police force, for Sergeant Evans, and I also want to thank everybody that was on the committee for all their hard work. You know, you guys worked really hard for the last three months to get where we're at now, but we still are going to have a long way to go in putting this forward and moving forward with this. So I just want to say thank you, everybody, and, you know, this is just the first step of a long road. So that's my all comments.
Okay.
If I can move forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Anyone else? If not, can I have a motion to, with respect to resolution 19-18?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the adoption of resolution 19-18.
Motion made by Mr. Allen to approve or adopt resolution 19-18 as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Finch. Everyone heard the motion? Other additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed 7-0. Susan, thank you very much. Debbie, Ryan, and other commission members, thank you very much. Moving on to the item number nine, that's the last item on the agenda. This is the mayor and council agenda items. Are there any items for future agenda? Okay, I think there's none. Susan, so do we adjourn and reconvene to the workshop? Is that the write-up motion? Okay. Counsel, at this time, I'm going to, now, time is 7:22, I'm going to adjourn the regular town council meeting for May 28, and we'll reconvene into the workshop to discuss the fee structure as well as the rule of, let's say it again, the town council rules.
Procedures.
Rules and procedures, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.